All right, it's 6 o'clock. Let's call our July 9, 2013 meeting of the Acton School Committee to order at this time.
Are you taking minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Well, I noticed in the principal's report that there were two things we were supposed to vote on. So I wanted to add 9.3 for the mission statement, 9.4 for the MCCL for the board approval.
9.3 is the mission statement?
Right.
Okay.
9.4 was the cohort MCCL. And then I didn't know if we should add a 9.5 to say we have to find a replacement, you know, just to talk about a replacement member because Richard stepped down.
Yeah, let's make that 9.5. That's it?
Yeah.
So Kevin, adjustments to our agenda and a new business. We're adding 9.3, which is the mission statement that was included in our packet. 9.4 will be the cohort. And then 9.5 will be the announcement of a vacancy.
Vacancy, that's the word.
Okay. Any other adjustments? Then let's move on to the minutes.
Or is that yours? That's from...
I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11, 2013 meeting.
I just have one glitch. Page 2, it just says 11.000. If we could just get rid of like when these are... I don't know. It's like 5.6, 1, 2, 3, the fourth paragraph. But 5.6, the second paragraph, is newcomers one word? The newcomer's second sentence?
One word.
Yeah, it is one word. Yeah.
Okay. So just, I just like when things...
And so you just want to change the period to a comma? It looks like a comma, me. 11,000.
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, it just has an extra zero. It's 11.000. It is a point, but it has three zeros.
Eleven thousand dollars, a cost saving of 11,000.
Oh, it should be a comma. Gotcha. I knew something was wrong. I had underlined it. Like, okay.
I'd rather save 11,000 than 11.
Yeah.
11,000.
All for it.
Comma.
Okay.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. So...
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes as printed here with those two exceptions of...
Those two corrections.
Yep. Newcomers is one word, and 11,000.
I'll second it.
Okay. We moved and seconded that we accept the minutes of our June 11 meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? So moved. Any comments from the public?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd just like to compliment the maintenance staff on the grounds. They look very nice. And Andy does a good job of keeping it nice all the time, too. I kind of go in back and forth, and I really, it catches my eye, and I think he's doing a very good job. He's mostly inside the school, too, and out quite often and whatnot.
Mother Nature has helped this year.
I think we're very fortunate to have it.
The rain. To keep things green.
Thank you. Okay.
It looked great coming in the door today.
Well, as I say, you know, they work hard, and they turn around and eat a little kudo once in a while. It's true.
Communication and correspondence.
Something about the lunch.
There was something here for the lunch. Basically, what that boils down to is that the government has said that school lunches must increase a certain amount in different districts to keep up with the, to keep the balance of the free and reduce lunches and to make them cost-effective. In the case of Acton, the increase that would be needed is five cents. And Holly recommended that we, she figured out it was going to be like $423 for the whole, for the whole school. And she, her recommendation was that we just leave it the way it is and not increase the lunches.
So to fund it locally for that?
To fund that part locally.
Well...
About $400.
I'll make a motion to fund it locally for $427 approximately.
Okay. We moved and seconded that we leave the school lunch prices as they are and fund any difference locally. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. We don't have a superintendent's report tonight. I have talked with Betsy. I told her she didn't need to be here tonight, but as you know, she has volunteered to be an interim superintendent for anything we need a superintendent for between now and the time we hire a new superintendent. Principal's report.
Well, it is definitely shifting time from cleaning up from the ends of a one-school year and already thinking about where we're heading to the next. Graduation was phenomenal this year. Really touching. It was very personal for the kids, and they did a great job. Some of them wrote essays, and they read them, a song, just the overall presentation. I got lots of feedback from even non-parents about what a positive and upbeat experience it was for them. Field day had a new twist to it with the tie-dyed shirts. The PTG organized this, funded it, and then helped make it happen during that day as well. We have a small, yet exceptionally dedicated core of adults, parent-teacher group, that just goes above and beyond, and they really did some fantastic things this year. We managed to have everybody wear their T-shirts, or nearly everybody, the last day of school, and did a group photo.
Sorry.
You see me? I sent it along to you to see. It just, I don't know, that was just really cool. So I was really, really pleased with that, and the kids and the staff alike just felt great about such a common experience. On to the next section is really about things that we're talking about with moving forward. With education, to stand still is to go backwards. But I don't want to rush and do too much too quickly and have to backtrack either. So the RISC contract are just about the initial steps. The first initial steps of training and discussion that have already been put in place, as I wrote in my report, is less than $6,000. The next round, I've received a proposal, but I'm not asking at this time to afford. I want to give us a chance to get our feet wet, see how it goes, to have time to reflect. But I do have the cohort request. The cohort request is down at the bottom. This is a very different group. It's a very grassroots, teacher-initiated kind of, and state-of-main-only initiative. So it's districts that are getting together on a monthly basis to talk about the changes in education, how we can support each other, what's working and what's not, how schools are moving forward. It's a really, really personally and professionally invested group. And so that cohort membership is based on student enrollment, the October student enrollment. So again, I'm using grant money, but I need the board's approval to become a full membership. And that's for one year. They offer training and activity, learning things at no cost to its members. We have had an associate membership, but full members have more access. And not just for me, but like for a training that's going on in August, I can take other people with me at no cost. Whereas as an associate member, I'm like the second tier of invites. You know, if the seats are full, I don't get an opportunity to go. So again, I'm asking for, at the time, for the vote. I think it may prove to be one of the greatest associative groups for the school because we are so small. I can visit other schools. We can learn from other schools. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. I know there has been concern, Mary, that you've expressed about where the good and the not-so-good of where education is going. I think this is one of those opportunities. Because the groups are so diverse, we're talking about colleges in Maine are involved in this group. You know, what are they seeing? What kind of students are they looking for? There are rural schools that I've already started connecting with who have similar demographics to us, that I just don't think I can get the resources elsewhere. So that's why I'm asking for that. Tied to the RISC contract was the initial site visit from Doug Finn, who is from the RISC company, which is Reinventing Schools Coalition. He came and he talked to staff and students and even some parents and tried to get a sense of what did the people here in the building know about where Acton wanted to go? What was important to us? And so there was a lot of chance for him to ask anonymous but candid questions about how people felt. And he's given us that reflection back to say, you know, we have a lot of good things going here, but a lot of the kids and adults as well couldn't articulate what we're trying to do right at the moment, which is the mission/vision work. So as these become approved, we really need to make sure that we do due diligence of the PR and getting it out there so that kids know why the teacher is requiring them to do something. So the parents know why the child's coming home with that assignment or is studying that topic. This communication and transparency with education is really, really important. And I think too many times it's easy to say, well, the teacher knows, and so the student should just do it. But that's really not going to help the kids make good decisions in the long run for themselves. They need to learn how to be consumers, especially as the kids get older in age. But it also will allow us to look at the culture and the climate of the school. These reflections, I believe, are important even if we were not to stay with RISC for the next five years, even if we were to say, you know, the Marzano or some other approach is a more viable one for Acton. The new learning has to happen, and we have to be reflective every step of the way as to where we are and where we need to go.
Now, this guy was here one day?
He was here, that was a one-day snapshot. He was here another day. I walked him through the school, sat down with him for about three hours going over. And Joyce sat in with part of that meeting. And he even said that, that that's a reality that we have to understand. This was a snapshot.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this is the view and the conversation he had with the people he had. Just like a standardized test, it'll never give you all the points, all the views. June 27, I wrote here that I met with Jan Goldsberry. She's a curriculum coordinator for Sanford. The larger districts do have a single person in those positions. RSU 57, Massabesic has the same. Noble has a person in charge of curriculum. Because we are small, curriculum falls under my jurisdiction. But I feel like, again, the connection between us and where our students are headed off for high school needs to be tighter and clearer. So Jan has agreed to meet with me once a month and to talk about curriculum, to talk about the new learning, to share resources. There are teachers that went to the training, the classroom design and delivery training in May here, and there are some that missed it. Sanford's offering it to their teachers. She's guaranteed me 10 seats in that September training, so I can send those teachers that missed. And it's going to be a per-person type cost. So if I send five, I only pay for five. So we're looking forward to having that communication and that collaboration happen more. Yeah, I really think it'd be really good. And I think the only way to do it is to set the time, set a meeting face-to-face, always know. That'll keep both of us in check with each other. The mission statement is there. "The Acton School Department ensures that all children gain the knowledge and essential skills to become healthy, competent, and responsible citizens able to meet the demands of our ever-changing world." This was crafted at first by a very large group, taking into consideration the surveys and the large group that met.
Did they look at that?
We looked at that, absolutely. Yep.
Because it's very similar.
And that's what we said. We're not that far off from where we want to keep going. So yes, the original mission was looked at and considered, and then it was just really updated.
Mm-hmm.
So again, I think it shows that we've always been on the right track. The next step is the vision, and that is in the draft stages as well. Interviews. The first round of interviews for the Gibson Talented position as well as the Library of Media position did not produce candidates. So we have re, thrown the net out again.
And?
We have more applicants this time already than we did the first round, so...
Did we offer attending body, or did we not?
One was offered and had a change of heart, was going to say yes and then declined, and the other was not offered.
Is that clear?
I can say.
Oh, you can't?
No.
Oh, good.
So, um, attendance.
Have you had any more applicants since you got it in the...
I have got additional Gibson Talented applicants at this time.
That's great.
So I'm pleased with that, and it's going to be posted for another week and a half, two weeks. So I think it's going to be three, I think it's three weeks in the Portland Press Herald online as well as serving schools. The attendance data, I'd like to update the school board. I apologize for some of the handwritten pieces that came in over the phone, so I had to fill it in as I got it.
Fill them the blame.
When we do reports for AYP, the expected attendance rate is at 95% or better for taking tests. So based on that, that's basically my goal for attendance, that or better. 100% would be great. So you can see that occasionally we fell short of that 95%. Sometimes we're just right there. If we rounded to the hole, we would.
Missing a sheet.
You missing something?
I have not got a year out.
There was an extra. This one?
Yeah, I didn't have it.
So we've got some highs of 96 and 97 percentiles, and we've got some lows that fall between 90 and 92.
But again, we have hardly any people.
Right, you can have two long-term absences, absolutely.
So hard.
Well, we find that, you know, if you're looking at, again, 95 percentile...
When you look at 90, that's good to me in this small school. I'm just saying.
I know. It doesn't take many to see.
Right.
Absolutely. And that's where we always struggle when we're talking about test-taking.
We're talking about kids?
Mostly kids I'm talking.
You know, if you've got, if you've got a classroom of 18 kids and three of them don't show up that day for a test, now you're impacting, there's no doubt, it's a concern. But the numbers are still there. And, you know, I'm always encouraging staff and students to attend school.
I think it looks good. I mean, really good, whereas, because we could skew it so easily with just a few people out.
Yeah.
My only, and I don't think it's real significant, but I don't love the fact that most of the months, the student percentage is higher than the teachers.
Huh.
It could be, it could be, yeah.
But, you know...
I think it's a conversation.
Well, that goes back to negotiations in the contract. When you allow people to take time, they can take time.
But yeah, I think, I think it's a conversation just that. More months than not, student percentage, students are here more, the greater percentage of students are here than teachers. And they're both reasonably high, but it's a conversation.
It's a conversation.
It's a conversation.
And that's why I think trends are important to look at. You know, any one year with multiple illnesses, pregnancies, any of those kinds of things, you know, can affect the overall. But we do need to keep an eye on it. It is important to be here for both staff and students. The NWA data also is worthy of a conversation and also shows that percentages can really be impacted quite easily. There is far more data on this than I had reported out tonight because I have individual student scores. I need to crunch how many students were one point away from meeting. Because NWA scores truly are a snapshot at the time and place a student took the test, whether they felt like reading the questions, whether they didn't, whether they were, just so many factors. But I'm going to give you the, this is the cold, hard facts at this point. Without looking further into the data, you can see where we were this spring on this day for each student. And the NWA's are taking over a period of two weeks. So you could have the same student be right on the mark, feel like reading one day. Math is their least favorite, least favorite subject, and they're guessing because it's a multiple choice. But it still, it gives you the data to start with. And on the second page, it breaks it down. And we were comparing the end-of-the-year mean. The individual scores for students break it down a lot further. Parents get where the child was last year, what the expected growth had been, so a lot more detail. But I did want to give you those updates.
So clarification, Trish?
Sure.
In the first page, when you, at each of the grade levels, you have a percentage. When you say at or above...
That 190 mark.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and so for clarification, too, for everybody, that norm, that's basically the 50th percentile for the country.
50th percentile for the...
Yes, so for example, when you look at, like, the grade, you look at 31% of the students in grade two were above the national mean. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Because the numbers come from just millions of kids doing this, that gives you a sense of where the middle is. So if we're at 50, 50% of our kids are above that, we're right with. If it's less than 50, we're below national norms. If we're above 50, we're above national norms. Could you just...
Thank you. When looked at that way, we have just a few scores that would cause us an initial concern. But again, my goal is always to find out why do we get this particular score and what could we be doing better or differently? And maybe not. You know, again, with a class of 14 kids or 21 kids, just a couple of students taking a test and doing exceptionally well, or being able to take all three tests at an, you know, can really impact a whole class.
Now, special ed students take this test?
Okay.
So that could skew everything.
Well, but that's, you know, they can be doing well on it.
Right, but it's...
So again, if you're looking at the whole package, these scores...
Well, the comment on the skewing piece, too, though, is that you're comparing these to kids across the country.
Yes.
They have the same, they have the same issue.
So they have, exactly.
So it's apples and apples.
Yeah. So if they're, you know...
In what?
It's good scoring. It's just, again, I always look at, okay, why did we do well? Is that something we're always doing well at? You know, what other information does that compare to? So if I asked the classroom teacher, say, at the fifth grade level for math, would he say that most of his students do well also on the sixth grade math in the classroom? How does that compare to the kneecap scores? You never can look at just one score and say you've got the whole picture of a child's knowledge. But again, I want to give you the quick snapshot. The staff will be getting the breaking down for each individual class, and they'll be required to do some data analysis. And again, compared to their in-class performances compared to the kneecaps. And that's really what we're going to use to inform instruction. If we've got gaps that every student has, then it's not the student, it's the instruction.
Right.
We need to change our curriculum, or we need to support a teacher. And then finally, you know, we said goodbye and good luck. I see a typo there. To Pat Reeves and Rick Keshes. It was a great end-of-the-year celebration. Really just had a wonderful last day. Very productive, very, very positive in the morning work with the staff on some pieces of understanding how we communicate and how we work. And then moved on with, after the workshop day, to celebrate and wish Pat and Rick good luck.
Anybody have any other questions for Trish? If not, let's go back to the two things under Trish's report that need to be voted on.
Well, that's why we added them to 9.3, 9.4, 9.5.
Do them then, okay.
Yeah, do them then.
Okay, Joy, Special Education Director, 24.
Okay, well, you've heard me talk about extended school year many times, and it's actually in progress right now. We started on Monday. It's going very well. We have 10 rather than the 12 students participating, and as I said, it's going well. And I'm really excited about the early intervention, which is an offshoot of extended school year where we're preparing the incoming kindergarteners. We have five students who are attending Monday afternoons, so they're, they're getting some preparation and exposure to the school, getting speech and language and OT, Occupational Therapy Services. So hopefully that's sort of a stepping stone to a larger preschool program, perhaps, as we look to the future of early intervention for kids. We know that is, the research indicates strongly that early intervention is the way to go in terms of preparing kids in the long run.
Preparing parents, too.
Pardon?
Preparing parents.
Preparing parents. Well, it's also, you know, catching them and giving them that early intervention is so important, preschool. All the research suggests to start there. I attended the Directors Academy as I did last year, and the focus last year was, it started talking about Common Core in terms of special education. And this year, it was a real hands-on approach to writing IEPs that are aligned to the Common Core and with real specific goal writing and objectives, because we'll be required to do that by the end of 2014, I believe. So that went well. And upcoming, we have three educational technicians participating in the Lyndhamood Bell Training, which is phonological awareness, so getting kids ready for reading. They'll be participating in that workshop.
Which program is it?
Lyndhamood Bell.
Well, I know, but she has multiple LIPS, B&amp;V.
I believe it's the, it's an offshoot of Sound Sensible, so I'm not sure which one it is actually. I think it's a Sound Sensible, just the, the next level in Sound Sensible. It's not, it's not the actual LIPS, because the LIPS program...
It's very intensive, yeah.
It's very intensive. It takes quite a while to get certified to do that, yeah.
I thought some people had that, though.
Yes, they do.
Because I went, and there were people there when I was doing my education stuff.
Yeah, they do. Some of our staff are, have exposure to that, and also I think maybe Lisa might even be certified.
Yeah.
Lisa are a reading specialist. So, but that will enhance their Sound Sensible. They have been exposed to that and had some training around that. So, and that's really all I have to report because Trish talked about the Staff Development Day, which we all participated in. Great. So thank you.
I think I have a nice thing about the Staff Development Day. Good. That's a good idea.
I know I had an IT report here, so...
Okay, so on the backside of Joy's report is Mike's IT report. Tells us there that so far they've sold roughly 20 laptops at $50 apiece. That he's working on rebuilding the main server that runs just about everything. And that's about the extent of his report. And I think the report is short, but it involves mega-work.
Yeah.
Are they still selling more? I'm going to try to sell some.
I think there's more. Are they all gone?
They were more than 20.
Yeah, I think there are more. Facilities Director, you have the report here from Andy telling what they've been doing for some of maintenance so far about the floors. Some of the floors are done. Some of the carpet is going to be replaced this coming week, oh, this week. Septic system has been pumped. Grounds have been taken care of. You'll notice out front, both of the entrances to the, to the side, to driveways have been hot-topped, and the DOT did that at no cost for us.
Yeah, how'd you do with that?
I don't know. I don't know.
It's a tax dollar.
It's a tax dollar.
We did pay for it, so.
Pay for it.
Pay for it somehow, but, yeah. Then it looks like, it looks as though our oil contract is going to be somewhere near $3 again.
I know.
That must be information that he's gotten from Sanford.
Right, but I was wondering what we budgeted, 325 or?
No, I think we budgeted more than that.
Oh, yeah, it was 350.
Well, if it lands near 3, we're.
Yeah, we'll be okay there. Trees have been pruned, basketball court's been sealed, the new tables for the calf have been ordered. And upcoming projects will be, they'll be sanding and refinishing the gym floor and hoping to get the playground equipment painted and to have the building all ready for staff by mid-August, mid-August.
Where, where did the new chairs come in in the library? Remember that conversation, we were going to buy new chairs for the, what happened to that?
Those have been ordered. They've been ordered or, who's ordering those?
That was something between Susan and Andy. I think the order has been placed. I think we're going to do a partial, like a rolling in.
Yeah.
That's worth a question.
And what happened to the discussion about particular curtains or blinds that were going to be replaced?
He did that.
On the windows?
That I know he did. Those are being done as needed, right.
As needed.
As needed, yeah. Not an all-at-once endeavor.
Okay, that's it for Andy's report that he left us. And now let's look at Carleen's report. Somewhere here. Let's see, what is that on the background? Got to find it here.
Oh, back of the maintenance. Her report was on the back of the maintenance.
Oh, it was on the back of Andy's?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. I know, I had this other paper.
I know, this isn't like what we're used to seeing.
This is a, this is, this is an appropriations printout.
Even things have changed.
How much we got?
Anyway, it looks good.
So it looks good. Still finishing up the end of the year bills and getting switched over to the new fiscal They're working on trying to save some money on purchasing, doing some prior purchasing through Staples. And she's working with, she's been working with Trish and Joy on the end of the year grant reports.
Always a highlight of July.
This appropriation, this appropriation report takes the place of, you know what, how she usually tells us what, that's what this is basically. It's a, it's a printout from the computer that will tell you what's, what the unencumbered balances are.
We already took care of any overages, like the 110% in system administration. We had taken care of that. But this library went over, I don't remember taking care of that.
What happened in the library?
I don't know, it says 190%. I don't know. Can ask her next time.
Yeah, those are a little harder to interpret than what, we've been getting it right down, black and white spelled out for us, so we've been a little bit spoiled.
I know. Hopefully it'll all work out, like special ed psychological totals was 240% over.
Yeah, for, for last year.
Oh, on the back page.
Last year.
I mean, doesn't it, I don't know.
Were you typing?
I assume the last column is still a percent.
Yeah, but you're typing this large amounts of numbers, so.
Oh, yeah. Shall I walk up?
I'm not sure what I'm looking at here.
Well, when you see a number closer to 100, we spent all the money in that line.
No, I get that.
But if we went over that much, usually we have to.
Move things right.
Move things and usually we're told what we have to move. You know, come from another account that's maybe at, you know, 75% or whatever.
Looking at the 240 up here somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, just, you know, email her and ask her.
With the accountant.
If there's any. She said, what, on the 15th, they're coming to do the books? So, you know, she'll know at the next meeting what we have to do.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve all staff reports, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the staff reports.
I'll second it.
Okay, let's move on to committees. Policy Committee have anything tonight?
No.
Just under New Business, we have the second readings of a couple. Long-term planning.
Did not meet.
Okay. Any unfinished business that anybody knows about? Okay, then let's go on to New Business. For, under New Business, we have the second reading of policy IHBGA on homeschooling.
It's a long one.
Pardon me?
It's a long one.
It's a long one?
Seven pages.
Oh, homeschool, I'm sorry, I was looking at the first one, I was going to say, yeah, it is, yeah. But you know, it's almost exactly like the, like the first one that was there, that we had.
Very little changes required.
And it's recommended language.
So can I have a motion to accept policy IHBGA and for homeschooling for a second reading?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? So that policy is now adopted as of today, which is July. What, 9?
I hope.
Uh-huh, okay. 9-2, second reading of policy IJOC on school volunteers.
I make a motion that we accept IJOC, school volunteers, as the second reading.
Second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so that policy now becomes adopted as of July 9.
Foreign exchange student policy, we tabled it until we.
Get a superintendent.
Decide what are they going to do again.
All right, now, 9-3, if you go back to Trish's report, you'll see this mission statement, Act and School Department mission. The Act and School Department ensures that all children gain the knowledge and essential skills to become healthy, competent, and responsible citizens, able to meet the demands of our ever-changing world. That's the new Act and School Department mission. I have a motion to accept this as our, as our mission statement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I like that it was very similar, but like you say, it seems to have made it up to date.
Well, the first meeting we had on that, we seemed like we were going round and round and lots of good ideas coming in, but it needed to be concise.
Clear cut, yeah.
Clear cut, yeah.
So, this relates to the other pieces, you can bring it up before, but this is the better time. So, this raises for me a question in regards to, I think the mission statement's great. I think this connects stuff. I think all the stuff Trishy gave us is awesome. I love the proposal stuff, we've got the, we've got some NWA data, we've got the mission statement. A few questions. One of the questions is, where are we with the strategic plan?
Behind schedule.
Here's my question in the sense of, I totally agree with Trish when she, when she's saying, I like, and this goes to the other piece, but all, I think this, I think all of these are related. So for me, what it comes down to is, like, even if you look at two pieces of data we have here, we've got the mission statement, which I think is great, that all children will gain the knowledge and essential skills to become competent, we've got all these other pieces to competent. Now here's the NWA data. When we look at it, and this is really, it came to a lot of other schools, so I'm not criticizing, we're not close to all students being competent. So when we look at the mission and when we look at the data, they're not, we're not meeting our mission. That's not a surprise. My question is, the strategic plan, so we have here a mission, we have here data that gives us, albeit, a very small snapshot, but a very powerful and important snapshot of how well we are meeting our mission. We also have here really good ideas on a proposal to help strategically move towards meeting the mission, but I want to see the dots connected. And that can only be with the strategic plan.
Absolutely. Which is why I put the proposal on hold.
Exactly. But I'm saying this because I think this, this helps really inform the conversation moving forward. What I'd like to see as we move forward, and again, this is in spirit of having a conversation, is given, I'd love to, you know, I know we've been talking about it, look at some more data. So that given the mission, the mission helps contextualize what we want, I agree with 100%. But when I look at these NWA data, what we don't have is, well, what do we want? Is, what's our goals? Do we want 70% by next year on all of these? Do we want 80%? Do we want 90%? Mission says all. But you can have a goal for next year, you know, it's going to take us three years to get to all. I don't know what that is, because once I know what that is, then I know if this is right. It's hard to have a conversation about what steps and strategies to take if we don't know what our goals are in relation to our mission. And I want that clarified. And I think that all comes out in the plan, which is why my original question is. So that's, and I think, and so this is, then my other question is, so, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, discussion.
Can I say, I think that we're working on the vision next, and the vision, both the mission and the vision drive the strategic plan. So, I mean, that's, that's been our conversation. Trish and I have talked a lot about that, I have some experience doing that. So we're, it's, it's just, the holdup is that we need to go one step at a time. And we need superintendent.
Why?
That's a big tease right there. We know you're not criticizing, but that's the reality, is things were definitely put on hold that were not anticipated. And Joy and I have talked, we understand also, this is not typical, that the principal is doing the driving of this. But I also realize that once we started, I refused to stop. I've been waiting too long for this to happen. And the staff is so excited and so ready for these conversations. The, the feedback you said you got about the workshop, the attendance and excitement over attending the trainings, we're really poised to head in a fabulous next step forward with education. But I don't want to rush and make the wrong steps. I don't want to go two steps forward and three steps back.
Well, it's because you can't do it by yourself.
I know. And I'm not trying to, but I can't stop us either. I've got to make those baby steps while I'm waiting for the next superintendent to be on board. Because I do believe that person should have even more expertise and more.
Yes.
Ability to have these conversations about the research. But some of that really will take sitting down again with a cross-grouping of people to talk about. When you say collaborative, and actually I wrote this, I can forward it to the, to the school board. The staff was asking, I sent out a, what I call my corner news to the staff last week, and outlined everything that I knew was happening and where things were from here to December. And I did state, you know, that the next steps would be their input on strategic plan. And the question was, what is that really going to look like? And I said, well, if you take, like, in, in the next vision level about a collaborative learner, what does that look like? How do you measure it? How does it get taught? How will we know if it has been taught? Those things, a strategic plan will help us identify. It should not be Trish's strategic plan. It has to be the department, it has to be the whole district. But it also then will have some conversations where people disagree. It will be points where sometimes people say, well, you know what, I don't think that's an important part of math. Or I don't think kids today need to know that. I mean, a simple thing like handwriting, if we're going to have effective communicators, do we or do we not continue to teach handwriting? And to what level are we expecting each student to reach mastery? It's a huge conversation for people. I am not going to make that decision in isolation. But where we, if we want effective communicators, what, what does that look like? To somebody who has never been on a computer, email may not be the effective communication they're thinking of. To some kid who all they've seen is a cordless, up to the phone and texting, effective communication could be very different.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
So as you move forward with the vision, so is, is it, a recommendation it could very well be, is when we look at the mission, so, because basically what we need, steps to the process are such that you have a mission. The mission is, this is what we are here to do. The vision is, within five years, this is what it will look like, this is what the vision enacted will look like. We're not there yet, so we need the strategic plan to get there. But there is defined back to the mission. And we have here, for example, students who gain the knowledge and skills to become healthy, competent, and responsible citizens. What, recommendation for, again, there's the vision committee, they're meeting, when are they meeting again?
We met the, just the day before, last day of school. And we are now emailing the drafts and giving feedback, so we have to meet again soon.
Have we seen that here yet?
Nope.
So one recommendation I have, not having, having not seen it, is the work can't move forward, and it can be at different pieces, but those key terms, healthy, competent, responsible, they need to be defined so that we can measure them.
Absolutely.
So for example, if we did, like, and I think this needs to be board conversation, when we talk about competence, competent at what? And I would say, I want them competent. In part, students need to be competent in regards to writing, reading, and math. Okay, good, we've identified that. Now what does competence mean? And then we can start developing some numbers, because then we can start saying, are we getting there, are we getting close? Right now, we have no way, we're just having, we're just talking. But I think that's a key, I'd love to see that as part of the missions, some movement towards defining these terms so we can begin to measure.
Has to be.
Would that be in the guiding principles? I think we have, the guiding principles outline a lot of what we're talking about.
And the assessments, you know, again, NWA, we're going to continue to use them. Do they measure what we're at, what we have decided is a goal? You know? Those questions have to be answered. The hard part, I think, for many of the teachers is they just want to know what lessons, how do you want them to do it in the classroom? I can't tell them that because we have to have these bigger conversations. And then we have to say, okay, if this is really important, do we have our teachers properly trained for this? And if not, how will they get there? And then how will I measure that they're successful at that? These are big education questions that cannot be rushed into in a day and be done. And every time we think we're done, we have to revisit and see, how are we doing? This is a secular thing, this is not going to go away. And unfortunately, because of extenuating circumstances, we hit a plateau here. And we're good. But we will never get to excellent or beyond or exceptional without this work in place. And it has to be a constant work of moving us forward.
So do you have a, an idea, that's what you're talking about, the next step forward? But I, I don't know if this is what you guys would be wanting, but it would be helpful to me, and I'm happy to help out in any way I can, is what do you see as the next steps? For example, we've got the vision, the vision work is happening. We've got a strategic plan, we've got the vision plan. What I'm not sure about yet is still, we've got a lot of different things happening. What's going to happen when next? And we might, I know we're in a flux because we're still looking for another student and things like that, but it'd be nice to have a machine. Looking forward to say for this year, these are the, when we, when we talk about, we've got to move forward, these are the next three or four or five things we need to do to move forward. We need to figure out the vision, we need to define, figure out what the strategic plan is, we need to start looking about what kind of PD to provide folks, but what are those pieces that we need to, because then we can, we can begin to have, I'd like to make those things that you're talking about, right now, they're still very amorphous, I think, at the board level. If we, if we had that, and I'm not looking for a lot, simple, we can regularly have a conversation during on-board meetings, where are we?
Oh, no, we have to, I think every month.
Absolutely, has to be a part.
But we don't, so we don't have that.
Yes, Joy.
Would that be something, yeah, absolutely, would it be something that you would discuss at the retreat to talk about? Because here's what, how I see it, the district, the needs, you need, you need to know what your needs are, you need your goals in terms of developing the budget. So if you look at kind of a precursor. of developing the budget. So if you look at kind of a precursor to the strategic plan, what are the goals that we have prior to getting that fully implemented? So you're looking at the goals, the needs, the program, and then the budget and the implementation.
And there's, there's more.
Yeah, but that's just like an overarching kind of look at it.
Absolutely.
So I develop those things. Again, I don't develop them in isolation, but I will send you what I sent to the staff last week. You can sift through some of it that doesn't mean much to you, but it'll have a lot of those things already identified as important, not necessarily detailed out yet. So as I develop those, and as I see, I mean, you know, there is a little bit of, well, you know, what will a new superintendent do to the steps we're on? You know, I don't think that anything that has been done thus far would cause anyone to redo it, but that is my concern, that I don't go too far in one direction without having the right research and input.
The new superintendent. I agree with that.
Because I'm really feeling, I'm doing some of the work which is not usually done at my level. And I, I love doing it. This is exciting new learning for me. But I don't want somebody to come in and say, you did it all wrong, or that's not the way I would do it, and here we're gonna start all over again.
Giant me.
I want to be part of a team that keeps us moving. I mean, the staff has been exceptionally participatory in this, and I don't want to see that undone. You know, I don't want them to feel like, here we go again, we have to start all over. So, you know, I'm trying to move us at a pace that is safe, and no matter which direction, for an example, if we didn't go with the risk training, if we decided that Marzano has more of the direct things that we need, it's not that their ideals are that far off.
Right.
But I can't keep paying for 17 different kinds of training.
Right.
We have to decide. And again, it has to be a we. Let's look at the research, but look at what we have already in place that's working, so I'm not gonna reinvent that wheel. And then where do we need to then step it up? You know, one of the challenges my, you know, my staff has is actually the interpersonal skills, because you've got a lot of people who've been working together for a real long time. So relearning how to communicate about this heavy-duty testing, assessment, how my students are doing, how your students are doing, requires a different level of conversation than my shoes. So I'm working on that training piece as well. You know, so I'm reading the books, and I'm getting the research, and I'm trying to figure out, how do I help my staff talk about the test scores with each other?
And not feel threatened.
Threatened, right, under attack. How do we do it in a way that says, I'm here to support you?
Right.
So that's very different than the instruction training that they need. It's so exciting, but it is so overwhelming sometimes. It's just, we have to be able to go at a pace that's gonna keep us from going under.
Yep.
And Kevin, at one time, you made your services for some kind of training available. What was that?
Um, what was that?
That was more instructional, changing lessons?
Yeah. It can be, it can be a variety of things. So it can be classrooms, it can be teacher evaluation, it could be literacy, it could be motivation, it could be instructional design.
Well, I would like to hire Kevin to do his training slash motivation. I hire him.
I definitely think, I definitely think where Kevin has, has made his services available, and where he has so much expertise in this area, that, you know, you should be planning some workshops and some training sessions in which he can participate.
Oh, yeah, because it's seven o'clock, he was gonna be here. I think that's, I think that's very important, and I, you know, Kevin knows that I, I've already, you know, had conversations with him. But that's also where the plan will have to be placed. So the teachers can see that this training is happening at this time because it builds on something else, so that can't be done in isolation.
Yeah, and what I'd want to first have conversations with folks, because I'd want it to be wanted.
You're wanted. I just told you, I hired you. Who wants you at the school committee level?
Everybody wants you, Kevin.
It has to be at the school level, so I think conversations with folks about. But again, I think all that's moved, I think Tricia's right on the money in regards to, the way I look at it, the simplest way I can, I think it's really money. I think we need to reschedule, and it's my fault we, we, we didn't do the retreat, I think, we still need to reschedule the retreat. Am I correct?
Yes.
And I think this, this, this is a conversation that we need to continue to have it. So I'd like to reschedule that. I wonder, is it possible for the retreat? What I'm still, one of the things I'm confused by, which I think would be helpful during the retreat, is, there's a lot of, I think you're right, there's a lot happening. I'd be curious, I don't want a description, but it'd be nice if, and maybe that's something we do at the retreat, what are all the different pieces right now in play? Because I think, given everything that's going on, that's, you have to start with what balls are in the air, and what's currently happening? How does it all make sense? What's the bigger picture? And then, taking all those pieces, I think we can start to figure out, move the next steps towards developing that strategic plan. Because I think one of the, the key things, when you look at, just going back to the data, the work we do at the school level, I think it's absolutely essential, the work at the institutional level mirrors what should be happening at the classroom level. And what should be happening at the classroom level, very broadly speaking, particularly when we talk about proficiency-based learning or competency-based learning, is we have, when it comes to students, it's even in the mission, we want students to be competent at. So by the end of my class, students will be competent at whatever it is, they will be able to. So my question is, once we figure out some of these pieces, we should be able to define, by the end of this year, the board will be more competent at, the principal will be more competent at, the teachers will be more competent. Because if we increase our proficiency, the students will learn more. But if we don't define our proficiencies, it's the same thing that's, that's, that's challenging in the classroom. We have to model it well. But we can't figure out what that is until we, I think during retreat. But I want to know what balls are in the air. So is that something that might be, if we figure out a date, at least in, I don't want you spending a lot of time on it. But it could be, you know, if it's
You're gonna be impressed with my juggling skills.
I know, I know.
All those balls in the air. I can juggle, actually.
And I use this in a sort of a challenger-oriented way. That's part of the problem, there are too many balls in the air, and not everybody is knowledgeable about what balls are in the air. That prevents strategic work.
Yeah.
And
We're just looking at the time, and then some other meeting coming along here.
Oh, is there?
The negotiation meeting at seven.
What are we meeting?
You knew that.
One's retreat.
No, we can't, well, we're trying to get another person to fill the vacant slot, you know?
So we have to put it out.
Well, until, maybe we'll be getting someone within two weeks, and then we'll, we'll set some.
Yeah.
So do we have a final yes on the mission? Are we good with that?
Yeah, that was a discussion.
We never finally voted.
We would discuss them.
Yeah.
Mary made the motion, Kevin seconded it.
Yep.
We've had ample discussion.
Yes.
All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Now, the other thing that we have to vote on, which comes under nine-five, is, I mean, nine-four is the cohort membership. So can I have a motion?
Now, that's coming out of a grant, you said, but we need approval. So I'll make the motion to accept the cohort, the MCCO.
I second.
And that's $2,411.
That's grant money.
My only request is, doesn't the principal reports, we just get updates on what they're talking about?
Say it again.
Wait, so when we go to meetings, I'm assuming it would be, but just the principal's report, keep us abreast of what they're doing.
Okay. Start having my own meetings. My reports are too long.
Knowledge and data is good, thank you.
Okay.
We didn't vote.
No. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? So moved.
Thank you again.
The other thing under nine, under new business, is that we want to announce, and it will be in the Sanford News this coming week, not this week, but next week, and also in the Smart Shopper, that we accepted the resignation of Richard Micho at our last meeting, effective as of June 30. And so we're gonna be looking to appoint a new school committee member. And what the ads in the paper will say is that if anyone is interested in being considered for that appointment, they will send me a letter of interest to my email address at the school. Okay?
And it's to fill out his term for the next year?
It's to fill out his term for the next two years, I believe.
Two years?
Two years.
Is it two or one?
I don't know.
That was two.
I don't know. I think it's two. I think Richard and I both, right, last year?
Cause Jeanette, 2015.
You and I each have two left. Oh, no, wait, because
2015.
We have two left.
Then it's one.
If it wasn't for us, it would be one.
It would be one.
I think one.
Okay.
When do we need to decide by?
Well, they'll come to our next meeting, right?
Uh, well, what we'll do is, what we'll do is, when I get all of the information, I will get it to you, to the committee, and
Yeah, we could decide by email.
We can decide by email.
Yeah. Could be quicker that way.
Once we get all the information, then, then the person could be on board at the neck, it could be sworn in at town hall and participate in the next meeting.
I don't know if anybody, but if people are interested, we just send them your contact info?
Wait a minute, how, you're gonna do what, by email?
If she has a list of people, applicants, she'll send us.
Yeah, and then we're gonna do this by email?
You can call me if you want.
No, no, just call.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, I don't know, you don't want, how do you know what somebody's really like, except doing it by email? I mean, how do you know in person?
Well, basically, what we did before was
We can narrow it down.
They, they all sent me letters of interest, and we looked at them all. I let you all know who, who they were, what their, why they were interested in it, which has a big part. I think the last time we appointed Betty, because she also had prior school board and school experience working within the school, so she was well-versed already on some of the stuff, so it wasn't like starting right totally from scratch. But that, we'll, we'll look at them, see what their letters of interest say, why they want to be on the school committee, you know, and
We'll make a consensus.
Yeah, we'll get a consensus, that's all we need. It's not a, an election, it's just an appointment for, for the remainder of his term. Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Now, do we have to go into executive session for all this?
We have to go into executive session for just two very quick things.
So is it easier?
Maybe we should go out, should we go out?
It's gonna be easier for us to go there rather than
Well, where, where is, where are you gonna meet? In the conference room?
We're meeting here.
You're gonna meet in here?
Yeah.
Joy and I, we, we didn't know you had negotiations afterwards.
We need to
We need to lock up. So Joy's figuring that, well, you guys can't set the alarm, so Joy's gonna call Jim to come down so that he can set the alarm when you're done.
All right, because they work during the day now.
Yeah, but maybe it's, better we go, because he has, he's gotta break all this down.
Yeah. Okay, so why don't we just
We'll leave, we'll let the other negotiators in.
For a couple of minutes, and we'll be right back.
Make that motion.
Why don't we do that?
Make a motion, go into executive session.
Second it.